November. I can't believe it's early. It depends on how I think. What time is it? Oh, if I could get off. I can't drive that. I'm just having all these bad. Hold on, let me get my. I'm a real bad lady now. But I did sit the last time. I went to where I was. Stayed there. I got up this morning. I could sit up like that. I just can't sit on my porch around here. Just a little tiny, you know.
We have something there. Oh, they gave you. Oh, okay, I know that. Don't forget to pick that up. It's some kind of card or so. We're all in Los Angeles area. So I had a big enough evening.
It's because it's civil. We have no control. So there was a process.
Get this from us. I think I sent an email.
Good evening, everyone. Could have our attention. Begin our meeting this evening. Welcome, everyone, to the Waterbury Board of Education Regular Meeting at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. We'll begin this, our meeting tonight with the moment of silence. Dr. Ruffin has a memorial.
In the moment of silence this evening, let us remember our former employees of the Waterbury Public Schools who have passed away. Charles Champy, teacher at Waterbury Schools for over thirty years. Cosetta Haxa, paraprofessional at Dugan School in the Waterbury School System and has substituted various schools. Ann Kalagi, teacher in Waterbury Public Schools for over forty years.
Keep them and their families in our prayers, our thoughts this evening. Commissioner Tom Vanstone, could you please lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Awat?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Pedano?
Present.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorah?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Present.
President Brown?
Present. Thank you. We have a corner. We may proceed. Next on the agenda is Communications. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to receive and place on file, Communications, as listed.
Second.
Discussion?
Under discussion.
Yes, Commissioner what?
I just want to point out that under discussion for the Communications, there is notification to this board of the three Assistant Superintendent of the school's positions being filled, two of whom we're familiar with, and I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to learn a little bit about the third person?
Yes, we intend to do that during the Superintendent's announcements.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other queries? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Do we have public speaking? Could I have a motion to?
Motion to suspend the regular business. We already hear from public.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We will now have address from the public.
Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury. I thought I'd join you tonight. First of all, bonjour Madame, bienvenue. We have someone from my old area, Louisiana. Down there, we speak French, a lot. Go down to Galatoire's Restaurant and tell them I said hello if you go down this vacation. A few months ago, I was speaking with my granddaughter, who lives in Georgia, and she plays the cello. As a cellist, she has certain problems, and mostly in the boing area. I play bass. So I said, let me teach you how to bow properly so you can win the competition. She placed eighth in the Lord. Meantime, I checked and I said, how about the other twenty-two students? Can we, would they want to? Oh, yes, but they're down here in Georgia and North Carolina. I said, that's not a problem. The IT person from the library said, just do this, this, and this, make these phone calls, and you can teach anywhere you want. So we did. The point is, we also can do this here in Waterbury. Because the way things are going, the costs are burying us. We just had to hire people, what, for two-hundred grand a year? That's more than I pay my gardener. The point is, if we use the Internet, we can trim our costs. If we take the freshman year of high school, work with post-college, who is going, who is on the Internet and using it, utilizing their skills and abilities, make our first year of high school in two years available on the Internet, we also can market it, sell it for money, so you guys can be salespeople and bring money home, instead of spending it, which you seem to have a hard time stopping doing. If we do that, starting with the first year of high school, it has to be fine-tuned, naturally. Teaching English on the program is very easy. The nice thing about it is, it doesn't make any difference what color the teacher is, as long as they know what they're doing. And that we have here in Waterbury, a fine cadre of superior educators, including the Board of Education. You guys know your stuff. You really do. Otherwise, I wouldn't bother to come to talk to you. But if we took the first year of high school, put it on the Internet, we could then start economizing the budget, because the budget is going to shrink no matter who tells you anything, because the people are running out of money. When people run out of money, strange things happen, and we want to avoid that. We want to maintain the education of our children, because more and more of those children come from areas of society that are having a hard time, which makes teaching them much more difficult. And if we use the Internet, we also can then utilize homeschooling to our advantage. There are some students which will do very well in a home environment. Those can be done through the Internet. And they all have the phone computer in their hands. You see them walking through the halls. We don't have to buy them anything. They have already got it. And if they do need one, we can always make an arrangements with AT&amp;T to give them to us for free. Believe me, you walk in there with a few ideas, and they will be very happy to be the first company in the country to be part of an Internet teaching program using their computers, their telephones. They'll pay us, and that's part of the program. We go to Tresher, which is having problems, Thomas and Torrington, say, here, we have the first-year high school available. It's only going to cost you five-hundred thousand dollars. It's maybe six-hundred thousand, because you want to take a vacation. This is what we could do. We could be the first city in the country to go online with education. We have a superior cadre of teachers. Why not utilize them? And give them a bonus for doing it. This room can hold, what, two-hundred-and-fifty students? With no problem at all. This place is falling apart, so let's utilize it while it can, as long as nothing falls on our heads. C'est mal à tête. But the thing is, these are the things that we could do looking ahead, because unless we start to economize, there's going to be problems, and they're going to land like thunder on our desks, on your desks. This could be a problem at a school, an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar repair job, which wasn't in the budget. All these things are never in the budget, because no one has a crystal ball that tells the truth. Thing is, if we look at the program of the Internet and the systems and how it can be done, we can then not just cut our costs, but increase the quality of our education and also make a profit. Instead of you running a business at a negative percent, you'd be giving the city back a hundred million dollars, because you're definitely going to have a shorter budget in a few years. There's no question about it. It's just a fact of life, because I deal with the people in the city on a daily basis, and the complaints are coming across in different ways. People saying, well, I don't know what I can do about this. I don't know what I can do about that. I said, well, I can tell you this. Taxes are going to go down whether the people who run the city like it or not, because the check will not be in the mail. That's the problem. But if we utilize the system that we're talking about with the Internet, we can sell our services to the communities. Who are we going to be the first? I remember years ago, going to Las Vegas.
If you could please summarize, sir?
Yes. Remember going to Vegas as a bass player, and because I said I was from Waterbury, I got a job right away. I said, how'd that happen? Well, you know, Chick Chaketti and these guys, they were here. They always showed up on time, sober. That's the message of the evening. I hope it was informative. Hope it gives you something to think about, because you're definitely going to have some fun the next few years, for those of you that survive. Merci beaucoup, à bientôt. Dominis pro visum. Peace be with you.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak who did not have an opportunity to sign up? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Motion to turn the regular business?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Return to the order, regular order of business. Superintendent's announcements. Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioners, I have several announcements to share with you this evening. The new playgrounds are now open at Chase, Waltz, and Generali Schools. The work is beginning on similar playgrounds at Kingsbury, Sprague, and Hopewell. These playgrounds are different in that they offer interactive activities using a parent's smartphone. I had a wonderful opportunity to meet with members of the community at the meet and greet at Grace Baptist Church last Thursday. It was absolutely wonderful, and I do want to send out a special thanks to the entire congregation and community for attending, and Commissioner Harvey for the introduction, as well as Commissioners Vanstones for attending during that evening. Despite the rain, attendance was good at both the Westside Middle Schools Community Day and the United Way Bed Races this past Saturday. I had an opportunity to drop into Westside. They were really having fun. Tomorrow is the district's Wear Pink Day to raise funds for the St. Mary's Hospital Foundation's Breast Cancer Program. All children can wear pink on Friday in support of breast cancer research, regardless of whether or not they've purchased a shirt or bracelet. And staff are participating by wearing pink. Next Thursday, several staff and parents will be attending CREC's Third Annual Family, School, and Community Engagement Conference in Rocky Hill. This year's theme is sparking powerful partnerships for student success. The keynote speaker is Mavis G. Sanders, Ph.D., Doctor Professor at the University of Maryland in Baltimore County. Kennedy High School's Young Educators Society will be hosting their second annual trunk or treat at Kennedy High School's parking lot on Friday, October 26, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be games, food, prizes, and a dance contest with the DJ. The city's annual Marty Gross and Halloween Comic Fest will be held downtown on Saturday, October 27, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with activities at Silas Bronson Library. Bucks Hill School will host its fourth annual vocabulary parade on Wednesday, October 31, at 1:00 p.m. The vocabulary parade is meaningful for Bucks Hill School community, because it is a celebration of robust vocabulary, where students experience authentic learning and literacy. Although it takes place on Halloween, it's not a Halloween celebration. The goal is for the students to create costumes based on vocabulary words provided by the teacher. This year, each grade level will be representing a different theme. The annual District-Wide Hispanic Heritage Celebration will be held on November 2, and more information and details will be forthcoming. It is typically at this time that I would have introduced the Assistant Superintendents, but we are waiting for one who is delayed due to her flight. And as soon as all three Assistant Superintendents are here, I will gladly introduce them to the board.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Ruffin? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thanks, Doc. If you wouldn't mind, we just had a pretty intensive Building Committee meeting. Would you mind, since we have some cameras here, and I know that a number of people, especially on the East Mountain area, are wondering, could you give us just a brief synopsis of some of the things we talked about regards to the Wendell Cross expansion?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Gladly. We've had several opportunities to meet with a committee that is moving forward with an aggressive plan to move forward the Wendell Cross building project. And I have attended, I've had the pleasure of attending at least three meetings with a committee inclusive of the mayor and the purchasing officer, as well as other members that are working on the RFQ, which will be going out possibly today, to begin the process of selecting an architectural firm. The timelines will be very quickly in terms of making certain that the commissioners are involved in the process, as well as an opportunity for the entire Wendell Cross community to be a part of the process once an architectural firm has been selected. We anticipate that the architectural firm will be selected and in place after voting from the members of this board in early January, because it also needs to go through the Board of Alderman. With the board today, we discussed several options that could be taking place during the 2019 school year, and we believe that the project will definitely be in place and on time so that we could break ground by October, I'm sorry, by October of 2019. We anticipate several meetings to discuss progress along the way, and we are anticipating that the process for selecting an architectural firm will be completed in a timely manner and will render us the desired outcome, which will be a new school for Wendell Cross, along with, and our renovations to the existing facility.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you. We're very excited about it. Okay. I don't have any specific comments, but I did want to thank Dr. Ruffin and all of the district staff for what appears to be an outstanding convocation on October 9 that really resonated with everyone in the audience. I was not able to attend. I was out of the country at the time. But I want to thank everybody who participated and for the enthusiasm in the new direction for our district. So thank you, Dr. Ruffin. It sounded like an exciting event. Also, I would like to remind people that we are planning a community conversation around the portrait of a graduate, in the context of equity in education, on November 13, and we'll stay tuned for the details. But if you could mark your calendars, it will be held here at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, would anybody like anything removed from the consent calendar? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President. In Building and Facilities Committee, we added a late agenda item, so I'm going to need to remove item 8.6.
Okay. Commissioner Vanstone?
Madam President, I'm not going to remove anything, but because we've struggled on the building applications for usage, on removing a subitem. I did make a request that a particular item would be removed. I did get a communication saying that that group decided to now pay the fee as opposed to a waiver. That was only half my question. And my question is, with the retirement of Mr. Brinker, is the vetting of these organizations? It happens to be a usage of Crosby High School, that I do not believe the organization that applied for the usage is actually the organization running the event. So I'm not going to try to remove it, because we've struggled dearly to remove a single item on the usage area, and that's why I asked for it to come off consent, a single item. That was not done. So I'm a little disappointed that I requested it, and it did not happen. I think going forward, we really need to be able to honor those requests, at least for discussion.
If I may, you can still remove it.
No, we've struggled greatly, and I'm not going to try. We've struggled greatly to move anything off a single item, and it would force the commissioners to vote on the entire agenda item. And I don't want to force the commissioners to cast a vote on an entire item on the agenda when a subitem is what's in question. So until we have real procedures to do such, or the request of a commissioner to remove that item, two weeks in advance is honored, I think we have a real problem. So I'm not going to remove it. I'm disappointed extremely, and going forward, we need to have some sort of plan to be able to do so. So, thank you.
Any other questions? So could I have a motion, please, to accept the consent calendar with the removal of
Motion to approve the consent calendar, item 8.1, 8.5.
Second.
Okay. I need to read them. I'm sorry.
You just don't have to read them anymore.
I didn't read them. 8.1, Request Approval of the Connecticut State Department of Education ED-099 Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs and Authorization of Dr. Ruffin to Sign the ED-099 Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs. 8.2, Committee on Finance, Request Approval to Apply for the CSDE 2018-2021 Education for Homeless Children and Youth Grant. 8.3, Request, Committee on Curriculum, Request Approval of the New Grade 6 through 11 Science Curriculum. 8.4, Committee on Curriculum, Request Approval of the New Grades 6 through 8 English Language Arts ELA Curriculum. 8.5, Committee on Building and School Facilities, Use of School Facilities by School Organizations and/or City Departments.
I renew my motion.
I renew my second.
All right. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to add a waiver request or to item 8.6. I'd like to add Connecticut Rebound Incorporated, requesting a waiver for the Willbe Gym on Sunday, October 28, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., for the purposes of a holiday fundraiser. We'd be waiving six-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. It is a Waterbury-based organization. It is a 501(c)(3) and has utilized our facilities before with no issue. This item was unanimously added or approved by the Building and Facilities Committee about a half hour ago.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries to add this item to the 8.6 facilities line item. Okay, can we have a motion on the amended list?
Madam President, the Committee on Building and School Facilities recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the use of school facilities by outside organizations, subject to fees and waivers, insurance as required, and as listed below. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner Vanstone, 10.1.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Building and School Facilities recommends approval of the review of final plans, which is the SCG 042 for the Chase Elementary School Elevator Project, State Project Number 151-0301-CV, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner, President, Vice President Harvey?
That's okay. All right, just want to, just in general, state how pleased I am that we are voting to make our schools, the four mentioned, that we're making them a little bit more accessible. It's really encouraging for those who may have physical needs, et cetera, to be able to, you know, go into our schools and not have to worry about different things that will not allow them to be able to get into our schools. So I'm very pleased to see, you know, that we are moving forward with this and the modifications that will be made to these schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next.
Madam President, the Committee on Building and School Facilities recommends the approval of the review of final plans, SCG 042 for the Hopewell Elementary School Elevator Project, State Project Number 151-0300-CV, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. 10.3.
Madam President, the Committee on School Building and School Facilities recommends approval of the review of final plans, SCG 042 for the Kingsbury Elementary School Elevator Project, State Project 151-0302-CV, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And 10.4.
My last one. Madam President, the Committee on School Building and Facilities recommends approval of the review of final plans, SCG 042 for the Sprague Elementary School Elevator Project, State Project 151-0303-CV, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Number 11, Commissioner Awat.
The Finance Committee recommends Waterbury Board of Education approve the professional services agreement with Sue Vivian to provide an expansion of quality enhancement services under the Quality Enhancement Grant funded by the Connecticut Community Foundation. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. 11.2, Commissioner Awat.
11.2, the Committee on Finance recommends Waterbury Board of Education approve the application for the 21st Century Grant for Regan School. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Superintendent's Notification to the Board, number 12 through 12.11. Can I have a motion?
Motion received and placed on file, Superintendent's Notification to the Board, items 12.1 through 12.11.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. I think Dr. Ruffin would like to make the announcements.
Absolutely. And there's additional delays in our third Assistant Superintendent coming in, so I'm going to.
I'm going to proceed with our announcements at this time. I do want to thank our commissioners for the opportunity to go through the process of selecting three people that I believe will be very instrumental in being part of a reorganization as we prepare to build the capacity with our leadership, to enhance professional development, to also be able to grow our own, so to speak, as we develop a cadre for assistant principals as well as aspiring principals and administrators in the district. The selection process has three outstanding people that will be assuming that role, two were our transfers from our own department, and I had a wonderful opportunity to work with them before that selection was made. And I'm very pleased to announce publicly that Ms. Maureen, I'm sorry, Ms. Maureen Buckley as an assistant superintendent. And Maureen, will you please stand? As well as, as well, as well as Dr. Michelle Baker as an assistant superintendent. And I want to talk about both of them. To talk about both of them and the work that they have done as we are reorganizing and really learning different ways of doing, of doing the business that we need to. They have stepped up to the plate of being willing to learn some new processes. We're all learning together. They understand that we are going to be having assistant superintendents that will work with the direct feeder patterns into our high schools. We know that we have a specific direction for pre-K through eighth grade schools. Each, Maureen and also Michelle will be working with a pre-K through eight model in the high school because the high schools are going to be, they're not direct feeder patterns, so to speak, because of the specialized programs that we have in CTE. All three assistant superintendents will work very closely while the high schools are going to work specifically with their feeders, but also with their specialized programs in CTE as well as advanced courses. And the high school portion will be working with our third assistant superintendent, who is not here this evening, will be coming in. She's flying in. Her luggage was lost. And so, she's delayed. However, she will be coming in this evening and the team will have an opportunity to meet her. But I'm very confident that the three of them are going to be able to provide that leadership along with the remainder members of our team who are essential as we move this organization forward. Our third assistant superintendent is Dr. Janice Epperson. Janice is coming to us from Jackson, Tennessee. I had the opportunity to work with her and hired her in that district and was actually very pleasantly surprised when, when she showed an interest in coming in and working with us. I have had the unique opportunity of working with Dr. Epperson as she was the principal of a blue ribbon school in Nashville, Tennessee. And then later, I promoted her to work with me at the district level, and she was very instrumental in the development of a full early college high. And when she voiced an interest in coming to Waterbury, I said, "Well, apply and go through the civil service process." And then, and then, you know, I, let's see where this goes. And we were very pleased that when I called her and asked her to join the team, she was very excited, and she looks forward to coming here and to living in Waterbury. And together, Janice and Maureen and Michelle, I believe, they, along with the rest of the team that we have, are going to be a very powerful team. And I'm very pleased to make that announcement this evening.
Great. Okay. Well, congratulations, and we look forward to exciting times in Waterbury. Thank you very much, and congratulations again. Next on the agenda, number 13, unfinished business, a preceding meeting only. Commissioner Van Stone.
I do have a comment for here. Did we officially put item 12 in? Did I miss that? We'll move to 13 if that's where we are.
We skipped number 12.
No, we didn't. I made the motion.
We did.
Well, you were talking, so I wasn't paying attention.
Sounds about right.
Item 13. Yes, I just wanted to, back on the consent calendar, we did pass, and it went by quickly because it is consent, two items, 8.3 and 8.4. I'm more than happy and proud to champion these two new curriculum to the Waterbury schools. But I would like to thank Mr. Reed, Ms. Mortensen, and of course, Darren Schwartz for putting those forward, bringing those to our attention, and making our curriculum more whole as we go forward. I will be remiss if I don't say, though, that I do think when we restructure, we also need a director, supervisor, whatever title we give the person for social studies, which we do not have. I was kind of surprised to see a study the other day that actually stated, and I think it's appropriate for the Times, is the vast majority of Americans actually would not pass the test that we ask of immigrants coming to this country to get citizenship. So, I think we need to apply more attention to that category. I actually only found out maybe a year ago when I called Darren to say, "Look, I want to take a look at the curriculum for social studies. Who should I contact?" And he said, "Well, we don't have anyone in that position." So, if we're going to add positions to make our central office better, I strongly suggest that that is something we look at. But I am proud to be the champion and extremely pleased with the folks that are doing this work for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. I totally agree. And when we get to that portion where we can, can move that forward, I will not only recommend that we add a social studies supervisor, I will always also recommend that we add a fine arts one. Because I think that fine arts is also a part of our accountability system, and we have very talented students in this district. And I would very much like to see the creative part as well as the academic part really excel in Waterbury. I think our students do deserve it, and I'm working on it.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Number 14, other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. Commissioner Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just kind of requesting and see since the beginning of the school year if we can get an update on the, I believe it's called Constellations, the company who was hired to provide substitutions for the therapists. Just kind of wanted to get a feedback from the staff of how has it been going since we've, since we did approve to hire them? If, yeah, I know the director, Melissa Baldwin, is not here, but at a later point, maybe at a workshop or at some point, just to kind of get feedback from maybe the teachers themselves or how's the staff working and stuff. And another thing, I know there's a lot of students. I ran into a person that I'm looking into to raise awareness as far as the LGBTQ community. There is a lot in our schools which goes back into the bullying aspect. So, I, you know, I don't know whether at a later point we could have a discussion, but I know of a person who does, you know, a workshop per se or something, just an open discussion so that we can make sure that we are following all policies across the districts and so that the kids are getting the proper support and that everyone is educated as far as the procedures and, and that they are, they feel accepted and between the students and the staff, they are made aware. That's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Stone, then Vice President Harvey.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. A couple of things, despite the shot that was thrown across the table a few minutes ago from my elder Van Stone on the commission. I did want to apologize to him. I misunderstood his request for that item in 6.8. Once the money was removed, I thought you simply wanted it out of the requesting waivers, and I'd asked Kerry to move it up. So, you do have my apologies on that. That being said, given that facilities requests are now in a committee that I am the chair of, I look to reopen the discussions that seem to have languished for a while, and we will be setting a schedule for those prospective people requesting facilities so we can have a set matrix and metric to figure out what they pay, when they pay it, how they pay it, so we don't have this kind of fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants, some people get it, some people don't. So, I look forward to doing that in a quick manner. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Vice President Harvey.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, and this, it's kind of compelling me to just mention this. The late great Alderman Hadley, Alderman Gregg Hadley, prior to his death, had an idea. He had a couple of things on the back burner, which he mentioned to a number of us who were pretty much in his circle. And one of the things that he wanted was a, the formation of a leadership institute that focused on teaching our youth about civics and politics, basically similar to what we received as youth. We had a citywide youth council, and I don't know if our parents forced us to do it or not, but we, we were in this, and we had to attend it every week. And I know, I recall saying to my fellow youth members in this committee that, "Why are we doing this?" And it took some 20 years for me to realize why we were doing it and the importance of that. So, the reason why I'm mentioning this is because I found out today that the YMCA does offer a, I think it's called a youth and politics course, and that the person that runs the course is not familiar, that of our superintendent, is not familiar of the Board of Education, et cetera. So, I will be getting in touch with this person. I understand the person's from Danbury, doesn't have really the knowledge of what's going on here in Waterbury. But I think it is very important for us to ensure, we're talking about social studies, to ensure that our students learn about civics, learn about politics, learn about the makeup of our government, United States government, learn about how to run for office, et cetera, not, not taking sides anywhere, any politics, any parties here or there, but just that they are aware of it because they are our future. So, I will be looking into this. I will see, see if we can, I know this gentleman wanted to get in touch with you, Dr. Ruffin, but does not know how to do that. So, I will reach out to this gentleman. But the community is also looking at this leadership organization that Alderman Hadley had in mind. So, we will be working on this. In fact, we will be meeting before Thanksgiving to talk about it. There's different, he talked with different ones about it, and so we're going to bring everyone together to talk about this. But I think it's highly important that we do this so that we shape, hopefully, and help to shape how our students do in the future in terms of politics and that they are aware of the processes that are in place. I just wanted to make the Board of Education aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We do have executive session. Could I please have a motion?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Excuse me, Commissioner Sweeney. Go ahead. Dr. Ruffin had.
I'm sorry. I did, I know I sent a memo to the board, but I wanted to publicly also share how I had a wonderful opportunity to meet with some of the members of our Muslim community a couple of weeks ago. And it was a wonderful invitation that I had an opportunity to hear once I attended a community seminar on anti-bullying. And the presentation was done by an amazing student. Her first name is Miriam. She's 11 years old, and she's also an author and had one, not only shared with me a copy of her book, but also autographed it. And I was so inspired by this young lady and the outreach that our students and the community had in their response to really an appreciation of the rich culture that we have in Waterbury. As an extension of that, I was invited to the United Muslim mosque and had an opportunity to speak, and I filtered a lot of questions, and just met some amazing, of our, members of our community as well as of our schools, and met some of the children as well as some of the adults that are very interested in the progress of our school system. So, I wanted to say that publicly. I know I sent it to the board, but publicly, I wanted to say how much I enjoyed that. And, and I certainly hope that I will be invited to return because I think that it was a very inspiring opportunity. In addition, I wanted to share that I was pleased, so honored to meet the teachers and our staff at Convocation and to thank everyone who did attend and for the very warm welcome into Waterbury. And also to thank Commissioner Awad and the Department of Labor for the Go IT program that we have implemented with our middle school programs. It's been awesome. And I know there are a lot of things that I perhaps will share with the board, but I don't say publicly, but I think those are stories that need to be told. Mike, hear this. Because I believe it's so very important that we tell the story of Waterbury, which is just amazing. And I'm deeply honored to have those experiences to share with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion. Commissioner Sweeney.
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.